Well, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes, okay, now we can see you very, now you're full screen. You're the only thing we can see now.
Oh, boy.
So we can better. I want to start off, welcome, everybody. And I want to thank Lewis Clark College for, and there's Laura. Welcome, Laura and Holly. Perfect, got everybody. Thank them for being great partners and hosts. I know between Allison and Taylor, it was just very easy to make this happen here. So we really appreciate them helping us out in that way. And there's, hello, Holly? Can see you well now? I think for those that will see the per- ...... Going down the open meeting. It to you, Mr. Burns here in just a minute or so, but we can see that you're there. Thank you for being available this way. And then the only other new name probably to this group will be, at least on our list, the last one, Yvonne Dunbar. And she is with the Attorney General's Office. We have had somebody that started off with us. Some changes were made. And anyway, we appreciate Yvonne being available to help us through on the meeting if needed. So with that, we can start with our first agenda item, and that's the approval of the agenda with a possible amendment to that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we amend the agenda to update item five to the following. Panel training regarding authority and open meeting law. Yvonne Dunbar, Division Chief, Office of the Attorney General. Information line.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Any discussion of the amendment or motion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Well, Yvonne, we're going to go forward with that amendment, but I, have you got something to add?
The only thing I would add, or ask that the panel add to the vote, is the fact that it's being updated just to provide some additional transparency to the public of what the agenda topic is.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any opposed? I think we were unanimous then. Just want to make sure we handle that. And then, moving along to item two.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the draft minutes. Move the minutes. I move that we approve the minutes from June 1, 2023, regular meeting, to July 10, 2023, regular meeting. August 8, 2023, work session. August 17, 2023, regular meeting. And September 11, 2023, regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, discussion of the motion, Amy.
Yes, I have amendments to all four.
Are they different than the ones that we saw last time?
Yes.
So they're new, they're new amendments?
Are they two? Let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five. So your amendments are for which, would be for which? And we do have a motion on the floor. We're going to call this discussion, but which specific meetings?
June 1st, July 10th, August 8th, August 17th. And we're not referring to September 11th, I don't believe, yet. But that as well, if we are.
Yeah, the part of the motion is to approve from the 11th of September.
I'm sorry, it keeps cutting out a little bit, so it's hard to hear.
September 11 is a part of the motion. The draft minutes are a part of the current motion.
Okay, so that as well.
All right, well. We do have a motion on the floor, and so why don't we vote on this motion? See how that vote turns out, and then we can discuss if we need to any further. So the motion is to approve the minutes as stated. It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I see two ayes. Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
And so the chair-
We're not.
Okay.
Agreement.
Okay. Okay, well, let's see. The idea, so the chair is unclear.
Can I ask, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yeah, let's do this really quick. Amy, let me, want to find out how we voted. It's unclear from my perspective how we voted. And so I heard a yes from Barb, and it looked like Laura, I at least saw the mouthing of yes. Is that correct? Holly, I'm not clear.
I would like to just hear what the amendments are, so I'm voting nay.
Okay. And Amy was a nay. Jason?
Um, I would also, if they're amendments, they need to be spoken, and then we can go from there.
So we have two that, I guess, could we say Jason and Jonah can speak from voting?
Madam Chair, she could just read the amendments, and then we could approve as amended, if they're-
Right, I was, madam chair, I thought there should be discussion, can there be discussion before the vote?
Right, so you just said that you had the amendments. And so the motion was to approve it as written, so we want to finish out with that motion because it was seconded. We can come back to it, and if we're going to say two ayes, two nays, and two abstentions, the motion dies on a tie. And so there's not a clear majority, and so we can go back and discuss the changes of your, or your amendments to the minutes. So Amy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, I'll try to be as fast as I can. I would have loved to have emailed these, but I thought after the last meeting with my email, even though I asked for people not to respond, I know I could have sent them to Taylor, but I figured this would just be easier, so it was in the public. So for the June 1 meeting, I searched and searched. In fact, I spent over an hour trying to find where that amended piece was, and I finally found it on page four, inside a motion that was made by Courtney and seconded by Jason. And so it was a question that I had asked of Heather, and I'm so sorry, please forgive me. I know I shouldn't say Heather, I should call her by her last name, and I don't know how to pronounce it, so please forgive me.
I think she's fine with Heather. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I just, it's, I'm not trying, you know, I'm a detailed person, and I think words matter. And so I just was hoping we could pull that out of the motion because it wasn't in the motion. It was just me asking a question of the board, asking Heather about the FTE positions. I think that's pretty important, that it not be inside that motion.
So you're looking on, I'm trying to-
It's the very last page.
This page four, the last motion there with Courtney and Jason, the, I move to amend the prior information request. I had a really hard time finding it. That's why I said in the last meeting that I couldn't find the amendment.
Okay. So the beauty of having everything recorded is that we also can go back and listen, so if there was a discrepancy, which things happen.
Yes, no, absolutely. And I have gone back and listened, just so you know, I've spent days.
The change isn't about the motion, but to remove some wording, some wording out of the motion, that is a question, okay?
To separate the two, please.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, July 10th, excuse me. Um, I was curious, I had an amendment myself, but I also was curious about the clarification from September 15th. Um, no, I'm sorry, forgive me. I understood that one. There's a clarification in another minute I was curious about. Um, my amendments were just some wording concerns that I had. I thought it's important to me, I guess I should say. So I have red and green differentiations, but it's, it says that I stated a concern for homeschool families. I say, I added that they're being required to show a doctor note of curriculum. It says that I questioned the need to require verification of homeschool, a student's needs for special education, doctor's notes, other verification, et cetera, and the need to prove curriculum. Anyway, she questioned the need for such data for homeschool families opposed to public school students. And I have added in there, if we're asking too much data from homeschool families. And this specifically is in Idaho statute, and that's why I'm questioning this. And it's also a huge family concern, and family has been sharing this with us. And so I do have-
So add if we're asking too much.
I haven't, I haven't written out, actually, and I'm more than happy to send it to Taylor and Allison. And then the need for such data, this is in the minutes, the need for such data from homeschool families opposed to public school students, as their information is already in the public school system via IEP and 504 plans, the correlated documentation. I put in here, I asked for follow-up on the process with homeschool special education verification. Just because I did, and I think it's very important, and I have had families ask me for that. So that's the only thing.
Okay.
Because, because it's so critical, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, I think you explaining what those changes are and telling us, and then if you'll send them to Taylor, we can still move forward to amend and approve the minutes as, as you've gone through the potential amendments. Okay.
Yes, and I, madam chair, I have them typed, and so, and Taylor, just so you know, the green is what I, I, red is adding, and the red is what I believe is, should be omitted, but as I read, so, just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, Jason.
I move we approve the amended minutes from the five meetings.
Okay. The second by Barb, so there's been a motion to approve the minutes, or approve the amended minutes for all five. Is there just any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I started with the easy ones. August 17th and September 11th. I would like to have much more added into the minutes, especially from September 11th, when we had the deputy AG there.
Okay.
And there was, there was confusion, panelist Jason. They say that you referred to the Blaine amendment, which you didn't. You referred to the Brady violation. And so they confused the two of us. And so I'm sure you're going to want that changed.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got that one down.
And then I have one, two, three pages of notes additions I would like added. I've spent a week on this.
To, to the September 11?
Yes, and to the August 17th, Madam Chair. I have, that's the one I had the question on. Sorry, there's a lot here, because I typed it all up. I believe that's the one where I had the question about the September 15th. Yes. The September 15th being added in?
We don't have September 15.
I'm sorry. It says note as of September 15, 23.
That was a later mission to make a clarification.
Okay.
We have a number of September 15.
Okay, yeah, that was a note as a follow-up clarification to the September 11 meeting. So I have a question for the motion maker. Jason, with your motion, are you comfortable with Amy submitting her amendments and then your motion taking in what she's just discussed?
Adding four pages of notes, sure.
Okay, just want, just want to be sure. So, okay, so understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I'm not trying to be difficult, you guys, I'm not. I just, voting's very important to me, and I don't want us to submit documentation, and I'm not implying anything of anybody, please know that. I just don't want us to submit documentation and vote on something that we're not doing our due diligence to try to turn in correct information. And, and so I've spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we're representing ourselves correctly.
But with all due respect, minutes are not transcripts. That's the difference. Minutes are a summary of what we did, and the summaries were relatively correct. We don't need to transcript everything that's been said.
I think Amy, Jason's motion, my, my question of having him be okay with the motion, taking in all of your amendments, is, is supporting what you just said. And so I think we could, with the vote, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. I, Laura, I didn't watch for, Laura, were you an aye?
I didn't vote. I, I'm just not sure how to vote on amendments we haven't seen, especially where it's four pages of notes, so I'm abstaining.
Okay, so we have two ayes, one abstention. Jason, I guess you're the motion maker. I'm assuming you're an aye.
I am still an aye.
Okay, Amy?
Hi, Madam Chair, I'm gonna, could you restate, state the motion, please?
The motion is to approve the minutes as amended, which will include the notes that you sent.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll vote, I'll vote for it as long as the, the notes are included.
Okay. And Jody is an aye, too.
Was Holly an aye?
Holly, I believe you were an aye, if I heard that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then Amy, you'll, when you get those to Taylor, we will get those to the full panel. And they will have those as, as they would leave them. Okay, moving on then to our public comment. We have Amanda Fletcher, who was asked to address, and what would be Allison, Taylor, the best place for her as far as-
Wherever she's most comfortable. You, you can be picked up from, from the table there, Amanda. You are welcome to come up.
You want to bring a chair and just- Okay, all right. So panel members, we've got Amanda Fletcher here to address us, so take it away.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm really grateful for the grant. I have three boys currently in the school system. All three of them have special needs. They all have IEPs. And that said, I've been frustrated with the vendor selection that we're limited to. My youngest is dyslexic, and to get his specialized curriculum that I need to help is very selective. And none of the vendors have anything that is ideal. I've had to purchase out of pocket instead when I have this grant available. So it's been frustrating with that part. So I guess I haven't watched the last two meetings. I don't know if it was mentioned, but if this is a long-term grant, you know, year after year, I would love to see it move to more reimbursement, like the, any piece of cards, or something that makes it easier for parents to utilize the funds. And not to select, I mean, even if it was just for the kids with proven disabilities, because you know, there's such selective producers of the curriculum, you have to go through, you can't get every vendor accredited that way. So I would love to know that in the future, I can easily access this faculty needs. As well as in our small rural communities, there's not the vendors available. I have a horse stable nearby, would love to have my one son with autism do the writing lessons. She's a small, you know, business. She can't run through the hoods of what Odyssey requires to do that. So again, I don't know if that's already been mentioned, but that's kind of my piece on it. I know there's other moms that, her son is part of the hard, a parent, doesn't have a parent community, and she's in the same boat. She hasn't spent any of the funds because what she needs are just some vendors for it. So I don't know.
We have good news for you on recommendations, and, and thank you for taking the time to be here. I think that you really speak for many parents that our panel members have heard from, and that we have heard from, that there are gaps in how the marketplace works, depending on where you live, what's available, and that there are clearly important resources that you would take advantage of if you were in a position to have the reimbursement. And so one of the recommendations that has gone forward to the Board of Education does take in reimbursement, along with I guess, I'm trying to think of the best way to say it, exploring ways to have a more robust marketplace so that you can find places that work for your family and the needs of your, of your kids. So thank you for being here and expressing that, because that, that just helps underscore the discussions that the panel has had on how we really maximize the benefit for parents and for kids. I don't know if any panel members have any, anything specific they'd like to say or a question for our guest, Holly?
Ms. Fletcher, Mrs. Fletcher, whichever, thanks for sharing that. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure you were finished with your comments and that you expressed everything to us, because we're super grateful for you being here.
The only thing I'd like to add is a lot of the media or what has been portrayed about parents abusing or misspending, I think was clearly about miscommunication on what's approved, what's not. You kind of assume, so I don't like that aspect of it. I like the freedom saying, hey, we know that you're great parents, and you're looking out for your children's best interest and spending them wisely. So I think going reimbursement highlights that, and it's like the trust system for the parents allows the flexibility to buy what you need.
Thank you. All right. We will now move on. I think we saw Amy. Oh, Amy, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Fletcher, thank you for being here and taking the time to share with us. I, I just wondered if you had heard, if you yourself or other parents had had any need for transportation services, or maybe having your, your child taken from, from one's, you know, maybe from school to a therapy service of some sort, if you had heard that need or had that need yourself.
Um, hang on, just one second before you answer that. Yvonne?
So we have to be careful with public comments, that we're not going beyond what's on the agenda. And I don't know if this is a topic in the informational item that's going to be discussed. I just want to make sure, so when it comes to public comment, it's the time for the comment to make a, like, to comment or give their feedback to a, the advisory panel. It's not the time to enter into, for the advisory panel to enter into discussions on topics that aren't on the agenda.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you keeping us in line that way. We could, Amy, if Mrs. Fletcher is willing, we could connect the two of you outside of the, the public setting here, and, and you'd be able to have that conversation. Yvonne, I'm assuming that that, that one-on-one is acceptable?
That would be fine. And then if there's something that a panel member wants to bring back for a future meeting, they just need to let staff know so that it can be on a future agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, Yvonne.
Thank you. All right, well then, with that, we'll move on to Mr. Burns. We appreciate you also taking some time to share with the panel. So we will turn it to you. We can see your name, we just, yep, we just need the, we don't even need the video part, but just make sure we can hear you.
Is that for me, for Scott Burns?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Scott Burns. I'm the National Sales Director for Home Science Tools. Home Science Tools is a science provider that has been supporting homeschool, independent learning, and charter schools, and public schools for making sure they have all their science resources to hands-on learning. For the last year, we have been involved with the Empowering Parents and the Odyssey platform for being a vendor for the, for the grant. And first and foremost, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to everybody, but also letting us be a part of the actual vendor community and supporting your parents. We've heard many compliments that many of the families and students wouldn't be able to get some of the resources if the state wouldn't have put the money in towards getting the resources and allocating them for the family. So it's, it's something that is definitely making an impact. I've been watching some of the webinars lately, and I wanted to just give some insight on what it's like to be a vendor in the platform, what it's like to work with Odyssey as a, as a vendor, and also some of the updates and some of the changes that we have seen in the last, as the grant was ending from last school year and for this school year as well. First and foremost, Odyssey is probably one of the best programs to work with. We work with 15 different similar programs across the United States. Class Wallet, Merit, and different programs, and Odyssey is great to support programs. Vendors alike, they pay their bills on time, they take care of us. It was really easy to get into the platform, to sign up and to get our resources in, and to get going on it last year. So I wanted to say that, first and foremost, I do believe Odyssey is doing a wonderful job. At the end of the last school year, and going into the beginning of this school year, we just started seeing orders coming in for back to school. We've had seen a lot of rejected shopping carts, resources that had been approved, well, not quite approved, but sent in, submitted, and then got rejected. As a vendor, we'd love to know if there's been an update of approved and non-approved items that we can potentially make sure that we're taking a look at in the future. We have protocols in place to let them know that a shopping cart has been rejected, and to go back to Odyssey to do their, their referral, to say, you know, this is the things that are going on. And that has caused some frustration to some of the end users of not knowing something has been rejected, or it's not an approved item. But for the most part, I do want to say, I believe that the Empowering Parents Grant is working very well. We appreciate being a part of it, and, you know, we've had nothing but, I would say, really good response from the Odyssey program and the people that run that organization. If anybody's interested or wants to learn more about what it takes to become a vendor in their portal, struggles or pain points or things that might happen, I'm more than happy to lend some expertise or to get some feedback. But I do want to say thank you to your committee for guiding and trying to give some good instruction on where we can go and where it can be. And I'm more than willing to help provide any other insights on other states and other programs that we work with in order to make things better and even work even more smoothly. But I want to be mindful of the time. I know I only have five minutes, but I do want to say thank you for allowing Home Science Tools to speak today and to give some insight on what we've, what worked with in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, again, appreciate you taking- We, again, appreciate you taking the time as well. Unless something, I don't think we're aware of anyone else that had asked to, we don't, I don't see anybody else in the room. And so I'm going to move on then to item number four. You have in your materials, other printed out on the computer, was sent to Matt Freeman. The State Board of Education meeting is one of the eighteen, thank you, eighteenth and nineteenth of October. And there, we were able to get our materials into the board, what will be the board packet, so that they have time to peruse and look through the recommendations. And so we wanted to include that in your materials to see or to show you that these things have moved forward. And I guess this is the the time or the perfect place to really offer the thanks of putting in your time. And there's a lot of recommendations in here. And it covers a lot of aspects of how the program can work successfully. And I will be representing the committee at the board meeting when there's questions as we go through, as the whole board goes through these. I got asked the other day, just what's the the panel talked about? And I said, we don't have enough time for me to go through. I mean, they really covered every aspect from from the perspective of being a vendor to being on the user side and everything in between. And and so I just, again, as a volunteer, want to offer my thanks for you. And as we get moving down the line on on the what's next steps, we'll we'll see where the Board of Education goes as far as the recommendations. So with that, I'm going to move on to number five, Yvonne. You're up.
Yes, hello, everyone, members of the panel. My name is Yvonne Dunbar. I am the Division Chief for the State General Counsel in Fair Hearings Division of the Attorney General's Office. And as my division name suggests, we provide State General Counsel services to a host of state entities, including the Department of Education and the State Board of Education. So my team is who, you'll see a lot of those meetings. And I'm here today to really talk through some things that I think will be beneficial to you as panel members. As Ms. Cridgefield stated, you are volunteers. And of course, the state appreciates everything that you do. And I want you to keep in mind that as volunteers, you also have access to the staff that are assisting you. So when it comes to things like potential changes to minutes that you discussed today, those are things that you can provide to staff and then staff can make it part of your packet for future discussions if you'd like to do that. If you hear comments or receive feedback that you want your panel to be able to address, then of course pass that along to staff so that they can ensure it's on the agenda. And then even if you, and I'm I'm going to go through what your statutory scope is, but even if you hear about something that's outside of your scope that still is related to the program, pass it along to staff because even if it's something your panel may not be able to discuss, it might be something that they can then pass along to the state board if the state board has the authority to address it. So we, while we appreciate everything you do as volunteers, I do want you to know that you have that support from your staff that you're working with. So one of the things I'm going to try and see if I can share my screen, see if this works out. And if not, I will just talk to you and unfortunately, I don't, let me see. Okay, so I'm not seeing easily how to share my screen and I don't want to, oh, here it is, never mind, sorry. So what you're seeing right now is I just went into the statute and pulled up really what this panel's charge is from the legislature. As you know, you are a panel that was created by the legislature and it's important to have you because you probably hear more than what the State Board of Education might hear because a lot of you are parents and you get that feedback from either utilizing the program or just because you're in the communities. So what the legislature charged this panel with is making recommendations to the State Board of Education. The types of recommendations for you to make include giving the board other educational expenses and services that you believe that should be approved educational expenses on the platform. You've done that, you've done a great job of itemizing several things. In addition, you've also done this as well where you make recommendations regarding how to implement, administer, and improve the program. And then finally, I am not sure that you've addressed this yet, but if there's a situation where a parent has been found to have utilized the funds for something other than an eligible education expense, then you get to make, you get to review everything and make a recommendation to the board on how they should decide that particular situation. And the reason I'm pointing this out is to get into the open meeting law. So let me see. A I'm going to reshare and bring up some things related to the open meetings law that will be probably easier if you're able to look at it as I'm going through everything. Let me. So firstly, the purpose of the open meeting law is about transparency in government. The statute specifically talks about the fact that it's forming a public policy that what happens at board meetings, at advisory meetings. And this panel is created in statute, the open meeting law does apply to you. So it's about making sure that whatever you do is conducted in the public and that it's not conducted in secret. And this is probably important to you for several reasons, one of which is the fact that I'm sure you appreciate the need for transparency in public meetings. But additionally, another thing to point out is the fact that when it comes to enforcing open meeting law violations, the person who has to pay a fine that is, or a civil penalty, is the person who participates in the violation. So it wouldn't be the state paying for it, it wouldn't be the Board of Education paying for it. It would be the individual members of the panel who violated the open meeting law that has to pay it. And an initial violation is to up to $250. If you do it knowingly, which essentially means the open meeting law has been explained to you, but you still violated it. So that knowing aspect of it brings the civil penalty from $250 to $1,500. And the third thing is if there's more than one, a subsequent violation in 12 months is up to $2,500. The violations or the penalties are per violation. So if somebody violates the open meeting law by engaging in email correspondence prior to a meeting and then attends a meeting and then texts during the meeting to another panel member or talks, the the panel starts deliberating about something that's not on the agenda, that's a second violation. So and multiple violations can occur even during one meeting. So we have to be mindful to really stick to what's on the agenda, making sure that any communications we have that are related to deliberation occur live during the meeting, not prior to the meeting. And by the deliberations, it's your other panel members, not staff. So you want to just be sure that you avoid doing those things. A couple of things that will be helpful to you to understand what it really, what is the open meeting law? When does it apply? How does it apply? Get into the definitions. And it looks like, I think you're probably seeing both my side part as well as the slides. And I don't know if it'll. Yeah, so the things to keep in mind are that it applies to deliberations. And deliberations relate to any communications you're having that relate to a potential decision you'll be making. And as I mentioned, with regard to your recommendations that you have the statutory ability to make to the board, it's pretty broad because it's not just recommendations regarding what can be approved, but also recommendations as to how the program is implemented. So it's it's pretty broad in where you have your decision-making authority. So you want to keep that in mind and be very mindful of what discussions you're having with one another outside of an open public meeting. And I just, I threw these in here because I wanted to point out to you that you you are a governing body because you are a panel that has the authority to make the recommendations to a public agency, the State Board of Education. And also regarding a meeting, a meeting happens when you have a quorum generally. So when you have four, four members of your panel. With that being said, the other thing I wanted to point out is while that's what constitutes a meeting, you can't have serial meetings where you might talk to one panel member one day about one of the topics that you get to make a recommendation on. And then a week later, you talk to a second one on the same topic. And then the next day, you talk to a third person. Right there, you've had communications with three people and you being the fourth, that constitutes a quorum, which means you just had a serial meeting and then you're in violation of the open meeting law. So some of this stuff you already know about, but I just wanted to to go over it when it comes to the open meeting laws. Statutorily, all agencies are required or boards are required to post notice of their meetings at least five days in advance. I think most of our state agencies do a really good job of posting it far more in advance than five days. And then you have to post the agenda within more than 48 hours before a regular meeting. When it comes to special meetings, so that's a meeting that, you know, if you regularly meet twice a year or monthly, but then you need to have an extra meeting in between, that extra meeting could be a special meeting. So then the timeframe of when you have to notice it and post the agenda is shorter to 24 hours. So agendas are required for each meeting. And it's important to keep in mind that if you want to amend an agenda, there's there needs to be some sort of good faith reason for amending it, which is why today, when you make a vote, you want to also explain not just what you're amending, but why you're amending it. So that's why I spoke up earlier what about the fact that this amendment was really, today's amendment was really just to bring a little bit more clarity to what I was going to discuss, but it still ties into what the original topic was, which is, you know, next steps for your panel. Because these are things you need to keep in mind as we move forward and in between panel meetings. And then you did things correctly by motioning and voting for the amendment, so that was good. Action items, you had an action item on your agenda today for your meeting minutes, which was great. And that's what's necessary so that you were able to vote and approve those meeting minutes. I I don't have a slide on this, but I just wanted to touch on the fact that when it comes to meeting minutes and topics, you of course want to have the vote, what your vote was, what the motion was for a vote, what the final result of that motion was, so if it was approved or not approved. But as far as the discussion points throughout the meeting and everything, you you don't have to, and this was said earlier, you don't have to have a transcript in your meeting minutes. It's a summary that's required by the statute. That doesn't mean you can't have more information, you're just legally, you have to have a summary. So that's something to keep in mind as you proceed forward. If you want to have longer meeting minutes or summary meeting minutes, either way is acceptable as long as you have at least a summary. So conduct at board meetings or panel meetings, as I've already said, they have to be open to the public. They have to be held in such a way that they don't create some sort of discrimination for any reason, which is why you sometimes see closed captioning automatically or it's an option. There's other options that agencies provide as well. And it's if somebody has some kind of disability that they need accommodated, then they they just need to reach out to the agency to see what kind of accommodations are available. I see Amy, I I'm sorry, I don't see your last name, but I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't know if I should wait till the end or ask now, Madam Chair.
I will leave it to Yvonne.
I'm fine if you ask now.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yvonne, the question on the minutes, because it would save me a whole lot of time if I didn't think it mattered. If if the minutes are, if there's a section that's totally incorrect and it's something we did not do or say, are we held responsible for that if we go ahead and vote on them? Because I feel like if I'm voting on something, I should be voting on something that I corrected or said and that it shouldn't be incorrect. And so I just, I guess I'm curious as to the liability and if there even is any.
So there's not really liability if the meeting, I mean, generally speaking. However, the meeting minutes are a record. So should there be some kind of litigation that comes forward in the future? The meeting minutes may be submitted as part of the litigation. My suggestion would be is sometimes when you have a lot of play-by-play in minutes where it reads more like it's transcript, there's more opportunity for potential error. So it is a reason maybe to consider summarizing things a bit more and not, because the minutes don't have to say, well, this panel member said this, this panel member said that. I mean, they can, don't get me wrong, they absolutely can, they just don't have to. It can be a summary of what was discussed with the panel. If a panel member sees something that is not accurate, then I think you should point it out. I think it's sometimes helpful, though, when you have changes, if they're not just a word or two, to provide those to staff in advance, just so that the staff can either make them part of the agenda packet or share them on a screen so everybody can just kind of read them as you're talking about them, just because that makes it a little bit easier on your fellow panel members when there's a vote of whether or not to approve the minutes with those changes. They'll be able to read them and really think through them. It just aids in the deliberation aspect of things. So hopefully I answered your question. Feel free to let me know if I didn't.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, if I may just follow up.
Sure, yeah, I can't, I can't see any of the shared screen, so I'm not ignoring anybody.
I can't see you either, but I can, I can see Yvonne. Thank you, Madam Chair, Yvonne, thank you. I guess so, my question pertaining to last week and Deputy AG Matt, I can't remember his last name, talking about the violation, I would, I was confused and I do, I did hear the email, just the assistant. But in my email, I specifically said, and and I wasn't trying to hide anything, I I sent it to everybody, right? The board, superintendent, everybody, please do not respond to this. And so I asked for no action, I mean, I wanted nobody to say anything. And so I I guess I wonder how that, how that is, nobody responds. Very clear that you want no action, you ask people not to respond, do not respond to this. And so that's still something you shouldn't do.
Correct. So if, it would be fine if board members were on an on an email chain talking about when to schedule a meeting. Because scheduling a meeting in and of itself, you don't need a meeting to schedule a meeting. It's not a violation of open meeting law because it's not the panel deliberating. However, if a panel member responds all to everybody, and it's not just like a question maybe for a staff member, but they do a reply all to everybody and it's related to a deliberation, that email itself is a violation. And every time somebody else responds, that's an additional violation. So what, so I came from a state agency where I was in House Counsel prior to joining the AG's office. And what we, as a matter of policy, has staff do is just when they send out emails to the, like, a board or panel, they put everybody in a BCC line, so nobody can accidentally reply all. However, it is incumbent upon the panel members to make sure that they're not using reply all. Because if you're doing anything more than saying, I'll be at the meeting, or that time doesn't work for me, then you're running the risk of violating open meeting laws. And even if you were not to reply all, but you sent a separate email to each panel member, that's also a violation because that constitutes a serial meeting. So a few other things to keep in mind, meetings like today's can be conducted So a few other things to keep in mind, meetings like today's can be conducted virtually and in person. It actually, in my opinion, this is not a legal opinion. It's, I think it provides a lot more transparency when you have the virtual option. So more members of the public can attend and hear what's going on. During meetings, board members have to audibly communicate. Now, if we run into a board member or a panel member who's online and for some reason their audio is not working or their microphone is not working, they can type. And somebody in the, at the main part of the meeting can read that so that they're still able to communicate. However, outside of doing some sort of public comment because your microphone is not working, there should be no written communication between panel members during a meeting. Instead, everything needs to be audible. So, and I've seen it happen where board members were texting during a meeting about the topics that were being discussed. That's a violation of open meeting law. So you want to avoid doing that, sending emails or texting with one another doing during meetings. And then I, I, I want to point this out as well. While technically two panel members having a conversation outside of a meeting may not be a violation of the open meeting law, it is something that if you have that conversation and then you're in a panel meeting, having that same discussion, you really should bring those conversations forward, not in the, like, explaining what your position is, is what I mean by that. So if two panel members had a discussion and they were talking about, oh, I think this would be a great recommendation. Want to, let's get it on the next agenda. Let's talk to staff, get it on the agenda, it gets put on the agenda. I would say anything that came into that conversation, that initial conversation between the two panel members about that particular topic, share those, those things just because it helps for a more meaningful deliberation when the entire panel is discussing it. So one example is the, the topic of transportation that was brought up earlier. If, if there is a discussion outside of a meeting, when it comes in front of the panel, share what your thoughts were back when you had that earlier discussion. Just because you want to be in a meeting, you want to openly deliberate, you want to have meaningful deliberation. So you want to share your various thoughts. Of course, in a respectful manner, which I, I see everybody is doing a great job with that today. So, well, I skipped ahead. I guess I talked about written meeting minutes earlier. So what they have to include are all of the members of the panel who are present, all motions that are made, the disposition of the motions or results of the votes. And then, like I said, a summary of any topic that's discussed during the meeting. And I'm going back to the enforcement because, you know, full circle, why we want to pay attention and make sure we're not violating it, but full circle, I'm back. When there is a violation and staff become aware of it or a panel member becomes aware of it, you definitely want to bring it forward as soon as possible if an attorney becomes aware of it. Because at that point in time, once you're on notice that there was a potential violation, you have 14 days to correct it. And what happened at the last meeting, it was corrected by reading the email into the record and making sure that that was, that deliberation then occurred in the meeting. So that created a situation where we didn't have to worry about any kind of civil penalties being imposed on anybody. Mistakes happen. We want to try to avoid them. When you recognize that a mistake was made, just bring it up so that we can make sure we cure the violation before any, before it gets enforced, which it can be enforced by my office, it can be enforced by prosecuting attorneys. It can also be enforced by any person who is affected or impacted by the violation. So just keep that in mind. You want, you just want to be on the safe side and cure violations or potential violations as soon as possible. The last thing I wanted to bring up is open meeting law kind of also ties into public records law. Keep in mind that any of your emails or text messages with or regarding panel business are public records. So if the State Board of Education or Department of Education were to receive a public records request related to your communications with one another, or your maybe communications with a constituent or something like that, that those are public records. So anything you keep in the ordinary course of business, if we get a public records request, we have to provide. So just keep that in mind. And with that, does anybody have any questions for me?
There are none in the room, and I can't see the screen.
Sorry, I just stopped sharing. Because I realized I was also looking over to the side because that's where everybody's pictures were, so.
Well, we appreciate you taking this, taking us through this. And it's, it's always appropriate to get reminded of, of where we are on all of this. And as we conclude our, our work here with the panel, again, I, I want to express my appreciation. This was a heavy lift in a short period of time and we got around the states. And I know there was a lot of feedback that was shared. It may not have been here in person, but you know, through a variety of ways, whether it was email or individual comments or conversations that you had. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Yes, and Joni has a fast, a quick, well, she said it quick. You can take your time on the question.
I understood that we're supposed to help facilitate if there's appeals and stuff like that. So is this in fact our last meeting or would we be called back in to?
So if everyone can hear, you know, facilitating appeals, the, the panel could be called back in at the call of the chair. And so we will wait to see as of right now, we, there's no one that's being rejected in the program currently.
Oh, you, I can't.
We do not have any appeals. There, there don't have to do that at this meeting. Jen might have something else. Hang on, it's just the internet. It said it's unstable. Hang on. What about now? Can you hear better now?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the question was, are there any appeals for us to consider? The answer is no. Heather just said that. And so the, the panel, I guess, is, stands at rest till the call of the chair. And so the recommendations will go forward to the board. There will be another cycle of grants awarded. The board will look at whatever recommendations they want to have put in place. And at the point that there are appeals to be considered, then the, the panel would, would come back together. But that, that won't be at least for another cycle, correct, Heather?
Yeah, I don't have any appeals.
There are, there are no appeals. Did I, did that answer? Jason?
That was the exact question I had.
Okay, yeah, we, we had thought that we may be in a place to do that and, and we're prepared for that at the Lewiston meeting, but it was not necessary. And so that's why the minutes and the agenda review were the only action items that, that we had on the, the agenda for this time.
Do we have an idea when the new grant period will open?
Question about the new grant period, Heather?
We are anticipating still this fall, and I know we're entering. Yeah, so soon. But if, if parents want more information about the exact date, they can go to the Empowering Parents website and we have a email distribution list that they can sign up. So they can get that exact date once we have it set.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Madam Chair, if I move. Thank you, Barb. Is there a second?
I can't.
Thank you, Holly. Adjournment is an undebatable motion. So all in favor?
All right.
Hi. Hi.
Again, thank you, everybody. We'll keep you posted on the progress and what happens at the board meeting. So thanks again.
Bye.